Welcome to the Shrewsbury zoning board of appeals. First order on our agenda is to sign some bills. Can I get a motion to accept a charge from Worcester Telegram and Gazette for October 25th, 2021 legal notices for $336?
Motion to approve.
Can I get a second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved. Okay, welcome to our first 6:30 hearing. And this is a continuation from our October 25th, 2021 meeting. This is to hear the appeal of Alex DeVivo, 14 Appaloosa Drive, Shrewsbury, Mass. For a variance to the town of Shrewsbury zoning bylaws under section 7C. To construct a pool 12 feet from the side yard setback on an existing non-conforming single-family dwelling upon property located at 14 Appaloosa Drive in the rural B district. The subject premise is described on the Shrewsbury assessor's tax plate 43, plot 011026. This is a public hearing and it is a continuation. Could the applicant please introduce themselves and explain their appeal, please?
Sure. Good evening, my name is Alex DeVivo. I came before the board at the October meeting and I think on their recommendations had to get some additional information. So in, you know, my previous application, I hadn't had enough time to get a certified plot plan and I think that was one of the suggestions. So I've been able to get that and provided that with the application this go around. The main issues that I've incurred and sort of learned along the way, and the reason that I'm asking for the variance is, you know, there's an extreme slope on the property. And then also, I wasn't aware of this until sort of going through the surveying process and getting the plot plan. But there's also a buffer zone to delineated wetlands that actually runs through quite a bit of the backyard of my property. So if you look at the plot plan, you know, that I had supplied, you can kind of see that even where we're proposing to place the pool, we're already well into the 100-foot buffer zone. And my understanding, you know, in conversations that I've had with the town conservation agent, that as long as I'm not encroaching too far into that zone, which I believe is 50 feet, so if you kind of like look at the buffer zone on the map, you can kind of see I'm already very close to that. That would be one point I'd make. Where you can see the fence on that, and I've kind of, you know, supplied some pictures that will hopefully, you know, give you a better idea of the slope. You can see in that, one of the images I provided, it's probably best to look at backyard two. There's a drop-off that's, you know, depending on what point you're looking at, can range from 40 to 50 feet. And in talking with the pool contractor, he basically told me that he wouldn't even attempt to construct the pool on that slope. There's other issues as well. If you look to that backyard image three, there's some existing stormwater drainage and I presume drywells. I wasn't the builder of the house, so I'm not quite sure what's down there, to be honest with you, but I do see the pipes that run down there, that's all underground. So disturbing that area of the property would, you know, open up a whole, I think, slew of issues and that's even if you could find someone that would allow you to construct the pool there. But, and then if you kind of like look at the way that the buffer zone shapes through the property, the curvature towards the back of the lot, that puts you further and further out onto that slope, which, you know, it's really not buildable as it is. So basically where I'm proposing is on, I guess you'd call it the southeast portion of the property, that's the only area on the property where I can meet the setback requirements from the deck and the house and fit it on what the, what I'm told is I have to fit it on previously developed land, which is existing lawn space. Otherwise, you know, I'd have to go through a whole conservation filing and that was, you know, even assuming that I can find someone that's going to allow me to build on that slope. From the beginning of the property, I think if you look at the topography handout that I provided, you know, you're talking about an elevation of about 490 feet at its highest point and then it drops off to about 414 feet at the very low point. So it's a, it's a pretty significant drop-off. And then as you get out further and further into that, you know, wetland area, I'd also note, you know, the soil conditions become rather wet, as you'd expect. And then, you know, it even points during the season, you'll, you'll see a brook almost develop from, you know, rain and snow melting. So it's land that would not tolerate a pool and that's, you know, what, what the contractors told me and he said you'd be hard pressed to find anyone that would want to build a pool there. So I, I guess, just to summarize, where I'm asking to place it is really the only place on, on my property that I could. And then the, the real necessity for the setback of 12 feet is because if I get any closer, you know, then I'm encroaching on the, you know, 10-foot setback requirements from the house and the deck. So in the last version of the plot plan, you'll see as it's placed, just requesting the 12 feet off the side lot, you're already at 11 feet off of the deck. So there's really nowhere else to go and hopefully the pictures that I, you know, supplied will kind of show you the space even behind that deck and where the slope starts. It's just, it's not going to be possible to put it anywhere else.
Okay, thank you very much. Ms. McAllister, anything to add?
No, Madam Chair, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mulcahy, let's start with you.
Sure, so thank you for getting the plot plan. I think it's really helpful and it sounds like it gave you a heads-up too as to some of the wetlands issues on the property, which I think, as you pointed out, are pretty significant in terms of the buildable area. I guess I'd say in terms of the requirements for a variance, I think the topography, you know, it's clear that, that you meet that in terms of the ability to build that slope on almost 100-foot drop over the course of the lot, really significant. And on top of that, you have the wetlands issue and the buffer zone. And I agree with the conservation agent, the closer you are to the line or away from the line, the better. And looking at the photos you've supplied, really doesn't look like there's anywhere else you could put it. And again, without imposing significant hardship, I mean, I think that, that looks like the best spot. So I don't have an issue with it, I think it meets the requirements for variance.
Thank you. Ms. Cosette?
So I no longer have issues either because of all the information that you provided. To me, slope is certainly evident here. It's less of an issue to me compared to the topography of the wetlands and the existing structures. Those to me are really your hardship. And thank you so much for providing that additional information. I don't have any issue with the placement.
Thank you.
Mr. Follen?
No issues here, I think it looks pretty good.
Ms. Ruffalo?
I agree.
Okay. And I too agree, I think the additional information you've provided has really helped us move things along, so thank you for that.
Thank you very much.
Good luck with conservation.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
It is a public hearing.
Oh, thank you. Being that this is a public hearing, is there anyone that wishes to be heard on this matter? Hey, can I get a motion to close the meeting? Or close the hearing, I'm sorry.
Motion to close.
Can I get a second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved. Can I get a motion, please?
Motion to approve the variance at 14 Appaloosa Drive in the rural B district for section 7C to construct a pool 12 feet from the side yard setback.
Can I get a second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
An attorney without a pen.
I don't do anything with paper anymore.
I got a ton of it. All right. Next up. Next hearing is to hear the appeal of Zara Chiron, 182 Lake Street, Shrewsbury, Mass. For a special permit to the town of Shrewsbury zoning bylaws under section 6, table 1, to operate an in-home business to provide beauty salon threading services in an existing single-family dwelling upon property located at 182 Lake Street in the residential B1 district. The subject premise is described on the Shrewsbury assessor's tax plate 33, plot 089000. It's a public hearing and would ask the applicant to please step forward. Have a seat.
Thank you.
If you could identify yourself, please, and let us know a little bit about what you're looking to do.
My name is Adil Yakov.
My name is Zara Chiron. I apply the application for, for beauty service from home. Is threading, threading and facial and waxing is a small business, so...
That's what we're trying to do, like openly using at home. So these are the services we are providing at home. It's threading and facial services and waxing. So there's no, any structural change in that, so that's why we apply for that.
It's not like any...
No structural change, yeah.
Okay, thank you, Ms. McAllister.
I will just call out a couple of things. We, we had the applicant submit the floor plan of the dwelling showing that the footprint, excuse me, the use of this, this requested at-home business does not exceed 25%. They show parking as well. And they also did submit the hours or the proposed hours and time and number of clients at one time. I can read them out as well, but it looks like it'll be Tuesday through Sunday, 10:00 AM to 7:00 PM and a max of two clients. They've also submitted a waiver request to not provide a certified plot plan. And I would remind the board of the usual condition of one year validity of a special permit for an at-home business. And I believe that is it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mulcahy?
So I think my main concern was parking and I think the information that you provided at least that somewhat, it looks like there's enough room for a couple cars. And the fact that you'd have two clients at a time, it sounds like that would be maybe one person actually getting the service and another person maybe waiting their turn?
That's not it. This is the two maximum, but what we are doing, the business is like the only appointment, one client at a time because of the COVID restriction.
Yeah.
That's the maximum we are doing because we don't have any, like, you know, we don't have any employees right now.
Right, okay. Yeah, so in that case, I really don't have any concern about that. I'd be interested to know if neighbors have any issues with it. And I would support having the one-year expiration to come back and make sure everything's going well for everybody, but other than that, I don't have any issues.
Thank you.
Ms. Cosette?
I agree with everything already said. I do see a note from the building department, Ms. McAllister, about beauty parlors and how the hair washing and styling of hair is not allowed as an in-home business, but the appellant is not going to be performing hair washing and styling. I was curious to know why we have that restriction, but I won't put you on the spot about that. The appellant will not be doing those services and I'm just interested in hearing public comment before providing any decision.
Thank you, Mr. Follen.
I agree with Lisa and I'll just wait.
Okay. Ms. Ruffalo?
I don't have any questions at this time.
Great, thank you, I don't either.
Did you want to comment?
I do know the answer.
Okay, good, is it a health safety issue?
If there's anyone curious in members, but it's about plumbing and hair going down drains. It needs to be commercial standards and most homes don't obviously have commercial plumbing standards, so that's why...
Thank you.
This point is there.
Very good.
Here we go. Okay, this is a public hearing, is there anyone that wishes to be heard on this matter, sir? If you could please stand up. We have a mic over here, if you don't mind coming over.
One behind as well.
I can't see it. Oh, there we go. Oh, right there, sorry. Could you identify yourself and your address, please?
Sure. My name is Arun Kumar Krishnamoorthy. I live in Hawker Ridge Road, right behind that property. My main concern is about the parking. The parking is the one like, I already noticed like a couple of times, like they park it, they use it the back entrance. So they parked the car on the Hawker Ridge Road, which is just opposite to my house. When I'm coming out of my house, it's disturbing. And also like sometimes they park the car on the, at the other side. When we get into the house, like when you get into the Hawker Ridge Road, due to the visibility and everything, I do see that there is a possibility of like somebody can hit the car or anything like that. So that's the objection I have on my side.
All right. Thank you.
So, please.
Is that all, sir?
Yeah.
Okay, great, thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to be heard? Okay.
I'd be interested in hearing from the applicant as regards the public comment and parking. It sounds like the general preference would be to keep the parking to the driveway if possible, is that something that could be done?
We did it actually, before we filed the application, we extended the parking for like at least two more cars.
Okay.
So inside of the building, yeah. So we were doing some, you know, flooring and painting and all that stuff. We have, you know, our contractor was parking the car, we're there. But we will take in the consideration, that is why we extend that, so we will park in the driveway.
Good. Great.
Great. All right. So we're going to need a motion, we need, we have a waiver request?
Madam Chair, point of order.
Yes.
Just close.
Oh, I'm sorry, sorry. Can I get a motion to close the hearing, please?
I just have a question.
Yes, Mr. Follen.
You'd mentioned that you don't have any employees right now, but did you intend on having employees?
Yeah, like when, you know, COVID is a little bit relaxed, COVID restriction, we might have one employee, not more than that.
So would that mean more customers than one?
It's only two customers at a time because we will have two chairs. Because we cannot park in the, you know, we don't have the parking space, so it's not like, if we will extend the business, we will, you know, do the commercial outside. But at home, right now, we are just, maximum we'll have two if we have two employees.
Okay. And do you have enough parking, do you think, for an employee and then also two customers?
Yes.
In time?
Yeah.
Can I just be clear on, did you say you enlarged the driveway?
Yes, on the side of the building, if you see on the floor plan?
Yep.
We added like 12 by, I believe 30 feet on the side of the building.
Driveway?
Yeah.
Okay, so the driveway's been enlarged?
Yeah.
Okay, great, that's helpful. Anyone else?
And just to verify, so in the document that you gave us, plan and parking, that drawing, that includes the, of the parking?
Yeah, I highlighted it.
Yes.
Yeah.
With dash lines.
Yeah, the extended two.
Okay, thank you. I just want to verify using GIS, I guess, because we, we don't have a plot plan. You're asking to waive that, correct?
Yes, we have a waiver for, a request for, waiver of the plot plan.
And it's not going to be on GIS anyway. Okay, so...
It sounds like the expansion of the driveway was pretty recent.
Yeah, like four, six weeks ago.
Okay, so very recent. That wouldn't be on the satellite photos either.
That's what I mean, that's what I'm trying to be...
I see.
Sorry. Multiple conversations. Mr. Mulcahy, what were you just saying?
Oh, just, so the driveway expansion, he said was four to six weeks ago, so it wouldn't be on...
Exactly, that's what I was just saying. So I'm a little, I just want to make sure our conditions are very clear on the off-street parking and are we able to actually make a condition like that? No, because we offer parking on our public streets during, not overnight, but...
Correct.
Otherwise, so...
Would I think it's fair to say, you know, if parking were an issue next year when it comes up for renewal, I think it's something the board can consider. If a lot of the neighbors have an issue with people parking in the street, I think that would militate away...
Yes, I'm just trying to alleviate anything within this year.
Yeah.
So that it doesn't even, it's not an issue at all. We are hearing from the appellant that they have extended the parking to accommodate...
To accommodate this.
So we will take that as...
Sir?
If you understand correctly, they are not going to park on Hawker Ridge Road, sorry.
Well...
So just to be clear, that is a public way, we don't, we cannot, we can't condition that because there is public parking on public roads in Shrewsbury.
Okay.
So...
My, my question then is if people are parked in the driveway, can two cars park side by side or will someone have to back out to let somebody out?
No.
Turn around?
We can park side by side. If we will park in the extendway, it's, we can park at least four cars on this side, but we prefer to park side by side so people can take it out, like, you know, the car is...
Yeah.
I mean, to me, there's been a considerable thought given to the, the extended parking situation that you're anticipating.
Yeah.
And with the one, the one-year license renewal in place, it gives us the ability to re...
Revisit.
Revisit this. Any other comments from the board? Sir?
Yeah, so I just want to clarify.
Yeah.
Nope.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The gentleman behind you, I just want to make sure...
I apologize.
No, I just want to make sure that it's not disturbing my parking, that's all.
Okay.
As long as it's not disturbing, I'm fine, but as long as if I'm, whenever in the nighttime, visibility is very bad, so when I come backside, if some car is there, it means I cannot able to...
Sure. Neighbors are hearing us.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We are right here.
Fabulous.
If you don't think we are here for...
The best place to say it, right?
Absolutely.
Here you go. Okay. Can we get a motion to...
Motion to close the hearing?
Motion to close the hearing?
Seconded.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved. We're going to need first a waiver request?
I approve the waiver request for plot plan for 182 Lake Street in the residence B1 district.
Can I get a second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved.
And I make a motion to approve the special permit, section 4B, for 182 Lake Street in Residence B1 District, to operate an in-home business to provide beauty salon threading services in an existing single-family dwelling.
Condition?
Oh, and yeah, so now I have to list the conditions. The conditions, you'll have to correct me, Ms. McAllister, the condition include hours from Tuesday to Sunday with, what were the...
10 to 7.
I have them right here.
Oh, thank you.
10 AM to 7 PM.
You can also say just referenced in the comment letter or something if, if you'd like.
Okay, with conditions referenced in the comment letter, including hours of operation, two client max, and that all parking is to be designated in the driveway, existing driveway, and a term of one year.
I'm sorry.
Sorry, we can't make that as quick.
Yeah, that last condition, CBD...
Parking, strike the parking, so, let's try again. I make a motion to approve the special permit, section 4B, for 182 Lake Street Residence B1, to operate an in-home business to provide beauty salon threading services in an existing single-family dwelling with, with special conditions as stated in the comment letter.
Thank you, can I get a second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved.
Do you have to add in there that you're going to, this is revisited in a year?
That's in the comment letter. We made it easy, so I didn't have to say all that.
So moved.
Thank you so much.
See you in a year. Thank you.
And where that is, I don't know.
Okay, Mr. Mulcahy.
Do you want to jump ahead of all that?
We do?
Only, only, it's at the board's convenience.
Okay, so we do have a request to take a hearing out of order due to some extenuating circumstances. I'm going to ask that the board acknowledge this and we're going to look to take our last hearing.
Okay.
Sorry, I'm struggling for the address.
Nine Walcott Road.
And we're going to try to move it, if the board would agree with us, up to the front of the agenda?
Sure.
Madam Chair, you can ask for any objections from the public.
Anybody object to this movement on the agenda? Okay, there being none?
Would be, is it been advertised that way? Because don't you advertise it?
It, it has, but we have, we can take it out of order if we all agree and there's no public objection.
I have no objection.
Thank you.
Just that one question.
Great, no, good question. Thank you. Okay. So we're going to skip to last item of our agenda, which is now going to become the second. This is to hear the appeal of Habibbo Amani, 9 Walcott Road, Shrewsbury, Mass. For two special permits and a variance for the town of Shrewsbury zoning bylaws under section 4B, section 6, table 1, and section 7, table 2, to construct an addition with a non-conforming side yard setback and to operate an in-home catering business on a pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling and lot upon property located at 9 Walcott Road, Shrewsbury, Mass. in the resident B2 district. The subject premise are described on the Shrewsbury assessor's tax plate 32, plot 354000. Sir? Could the appellant please introduce themselves?
Yeah, my name is Habib Amani and I'm living in 9 Walcott Road, Shrewsbury.
Great. Can you give us an idea of what you're looking to, to do to your home?
Yeah, we are living in this house with two special need, I have two special need boys, 18 years and 14 years old. We are so, we have problem to, you know, to take the boys inside the home. And we don't have a, a special bathroom and special room. And this addition will be in side of the house to build one bedroom and one bathroom. And either, this is the per addition, but we, because 24 hours at home, we expected to do the home catering, it's not home catering, but I can do some baking and at the basement of addition. No customer, you know, no any person can be served, just two of us. We want to do some baking and we have some friends, some, you know, they requirement, they need some special baking for them, we making and we deliver to them. I want to deliver, nobody want to come and no any serving.
Okay. Ms. McAllister?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So just to walk the board members through, I know there are a number of things here. So first is the addition on the non-conforming single-family dwelling, meaning the existing structure is non-conforming, it's a non-conforming lot and we are, as we've discussed in the last few meetings, we're adding living space to a non-conforming lot, which is increasing that non-conformity. You'll see the rear yard setback is non-conforming, it should, it reads 37.4 feet, it should be 40. So that's our first special permit under section 4B. The next request for relief is a variance and that is for the side yard setback of 4.3 feet. Now, perhaps the applicant can speak a bit more to this request for a variance and the hardship, but to my understanding, it's, it's for a deck that is both wheelchair accessible and usable for the children. Again, I would defer to the applicant as well. And then lastly, we did have a revised application for an at-home business, no longer catering, but simply baking. And that came out the request or the recommendation of the board of health, who worked with this applicant as well and myself, to understand what's allowed from a residential kitchen license perspective. And it was understood that a full catering business cannot be run out of a home through a residential kitchen license. So this reduced scope of baking or bakery items still does require a residential kitchen license, but that will be pursued once zoning is set and once the addition is constructed. So that's coming, but the zoning has to happen first in the process of approvals. So you can see we do have some supplemental material for that at-home business request. You can see a floor plan showing the basement level of the addition, no more than 25% of the total footprint of the house with the rough sketch of the facilities of the... facilities of this kitchen.
I have a question regarding what is being asked for. So I understand the variance, and I would, uh, we need to establish a hardship. I hope the appellant can explain that one. But now it sounds like the special permit or permits, or one, may not be relevant at all because they're not doing an in-home catering business. Instead, they're going to apply for a residential kitchen license.
So, yeah, I under- I do under-
That was not clear.
So, yeah, I can re-explain that. So it's still an at-home business. Um, so it still is under, um, ta- uh, section six, table one. Uh, any at-home businesses require a special permit from the zoning board. A residential kitchens license is just separate, that's entirely separate, that's through the Board of Health. Um, I just referenced that as-
Got it.
It was in my comment letter, so I, I understand how that's-
So they need to do additional work there outside of what-
So again, there'll be a, an additional level of permitting for the bakery or residential kitchen, so to speak, with the Board of Health. But this is, this consideration is simply for the use as an at-home bakery.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Mr. Mulcahy?
Yeah, um, so I think this one sounds really complicated, um, on paper, but actually, the more I think about it, I think it's actually pretty simple. Um, in terms of the variance, I think, you know, the criteria for a variance are the shape, soil, or, or topography of the lot, basically. Here, I think you have a pretty oddly shaped lot. It's a pentagonal lot. Um, the existing structures can also be taken into account. You've got an existing structure that is built parallel to the road, but not parallel to any of the other sides of the lot, basically, except for the eastern boundary. Um, if you were to slide the, the deck and the addition further south, you'd be further from that side boundary, but then you'd be in approaching on the rear boundary. So I think actually, in terms of placement, you couldn't do much better than that. Um, we've allowed decks closer to the line before than four point three feet with a variance, so I don't really see a particular issue with that here. Um, and I would note that the, the main structure, the main addition is closer to twelve feet away from the line, um, which seems to me to be pretty reasonable placement. It's not right up against the line. And as far as the special permit issues, um, it sounds like the business would be operated out of the basement. You're not anticipating any employees, you're not anticipating anybody coming to the house. So in terms of creating a nuisance by, uh, sound, vibration, anything like that, I don't see an issue there. Um, the only thing that gave me any pause is I note that the addition is two stories, where the rest of the neighborhood is single-story or one and a half-story split-level homes. That said, the lot that's adjacent to it is undeveloped, and the lot in the rear is undeveloped. So I'm not sure that it's going to stand out in any particular way to anybody or be a visual nuisance to anyone in the neighborhood. And it looks very tasteful based on the, um, drawings provided. So I actually think, um, from my perspective, you meet all the requirements. I don't have any issues with it.
Ms. Casette?
Yep. So I agree with everything that has been said. Um, I was hoping to hear from the appellant, that the hardship was the shape of the lot, but clearly, that's what the hardship is by what you've presented to us. You don't have a rectangular-shaped lot, you have a hexagon, and you kind of have two side or two rear, um, sides to your property. And I also, uh, viewed this the same way. If your existing house were just oriented at a different angle, you would meet all the setbacks and, uh, when adding this addition. And, um, so I don't have too much issue with the variance request. I am wondering, um, however, why, uh, if you considered having the deck behind the addition, and I'd like to just hear a little bit about that. Right now, the deck is what's, uh, creating just a four-foot, uh, setback from the property. Um, if that weren't there, then the house would, it would only be a twelve, twelve-foot, nearly twelve-foot. Um, so I was wondering why you chose to have the deck there and not behind the house. I think I know, but I'd like to hear.
Just, uh, when we want to take the boys, at the winter, always we have a problem, when it's snowing, raining. Uh, you can't, uh, take the boys from the street, you know, to back, and we should make a driveway again. And I can't go with my car to the back, but just the front, we, uh, we use the, uh, you know, transportation, and, uh, just they park in front, and we can take the boys to the, their room. This is straight, but if you want to use at the back, we should go and make a driveway, and I don't know, the transportation can, you know, reach to that place easy or not.
So you have, uh, next to the deck what that you're proposing, which is toward the front of the property, you have, uh, and a ramp that's wheelchair accessible? And now the deck's providing even more maneuver?
Because when we want to do the, uh, ramp, you know, is totally is going-
Straight.
You know, and, uh, just, we want to do the deck, the first, we bring the boys to the deck, and after, we can go inside the, uh, their room.
Understood, and regarding-
It's accessible just for winter. I know we have some time problem, you know?
Mm-hmm.
Now, it's totally, you know, last week, I had the emergency, and they can't access to my, and they took the boys with the, you know, uh, they can't take it with the, uh, you know, wheelchair. And because it's, uh, narrow and I can't- And now, just, uh, you know, we want to do it, uh, this way to be easy access. Any person, you know, want to go and in each of my boys, they can take it easier, you know?
Understood. So I, I, regarding the variance, that answers that question. I will want to hear from any butters. Um, and regarding the special permit requests, um, based on the appel- appellant's description and explanation of the in-home business, um, I'm, I'm fine with it at the moment.
Thank you. Mr. Fulham?
That answers my questions. I'm good.
Thank you. Mr. Ruffalo?
Um, I agree with the comments, but I also will add that if the request for the deck is being made on behalf of individuals with handicaps, um, we might need to think about the Fair Housing Act and the Americans with Disabilities Act, and how that comes into play with zoning. I don't think there's been a request for reasonable accommodation made here, but we might ought to, to think about that, um, when we're, um, looking at this.
Okay, thank you for those comments. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody that wishes to be heard on this matter? Sir, could you step up and identify yourself? Give us your address, please?
My name is Ron Johnson. I'm the owner of the property at five Walcott Road, which abuts his property. And I'd like some clarification on where he wants to put this addition. I mean, is he putting it in the back of his house? Uh, because in between his house and my house, there's an underground pipe, because there's a, there's a river that goes under Walcott Road and goes under the property between our two houses that empties out into the wetlands behind his house. So, is he putting the, the, uh, addition on the back part of his house? Is there, uh, wetlands back there?
So it's, uh-
So the addition-
Also, uh, one other thing, I don't know if the board's aware of it, but behind our houses, a lot of that property is owned by the, uh-
Power company?
Power company.
Sure. Yep.
I don't know if he needs permission from the power company to do this.
Sure.
Uh, they have a rule that you can put gardens and stuff like that back there, but you can't put any structures. So I don't know how far he's going back. Uh, is it in the back of your house, sir?
No.
Is it on the side of your garage?
It's side, uh, to the end. It's not, uh-
So facing your, facing your house, it would be to the right-hand side?
So the face will be-
It's on the opposite side of your house.
Okay. So I don't know if it's helpful, but, um, you can see it's on the opposite-
I'm sorry, I can't see that.
Too far away? Okay.
But, uh, so it would be on that side?
It's on the other side.
Okay.
It's another side, and just, uh, uh, I'm not going to the back, just two feet, because, um, the reason I want to use this, uh, three feet, just the bathroom will be small for them, and the bathroom requirement is ten feet. That is the reason I put the ba- a little bit, uh, at the back, uh, three feet, not more than three.
All right, I understand.
But, uh, but the reason, uh, you know?
So you're, you're aware of the wetlands back there?
Uh, because this, uh, I had, uh, before, they came and they said, uh, forty feet, but just now is, uh, thirty-three, just three feet from that side.
Oh, okay, just three feet.
Not more than three.
All right. My other question is residential kitchens. Now, does the fire department get involved in this? That, uh, you know, have restrictions about-
Health department.
Uh, CO2 that goes off, because it is a residential kitchen, so.
Good question, Ms. McAllister.
Considered.
Yeah, you know, it is a good question. Um, I can't speak confidently on it. Uh, I, I know we, we are only a zoning board, but I do know that it goes under extensive review with the Department of Health.
Right.
And then they come to inspect the property. Um, it will, the addition itself will be inspected, um, uh, by the building inspector and the fire department, um, during the course of the building permit, um, which, which should catch anything that is added at that stage. And then again, it will be inspected, um, by the health department, and-
Does he have to have special, uh, exhausts and fans and stuff like that for the kitchen and?
I believe, um, that's only if it was a commercial-grade kitchen. My understanding is that because it's a, a residential kitchen, it could be a kitchen like, like you and I have.
Okay.
And that's what the-
That clarifies a lot.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is that helpful?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else wish to be hea- heard on this matter? There being no further comments, can I get a motion to close the hearing, please?
Motion to close.
Can I get a second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Okay, so we have, uh, okay.
Madam Chair, may I, I'm, I'm-
Yes, Ms. McAllister.
For jumping in here. Um, the board, I know we just went through this with the last at-home business request, but-
One year?
Given our one-year, um, kind of rule generally, I do know that this structure is being constructed, um, and, and I suppose it hasn't started yet, so the board may want to consider a year and a half as it, or potentially a year, but, but either way, knowing that it won't start right away, correct? So the structure has to fill-
I see what you're saying.
Yeah.
Um, first, so.
Yep.
Just a thought there.
What is the last stage of the permit process once construction's complete?
Uh, so it'd be a final inspection?
Okay.
Um, and then the certificate of occupancy.
One year from final inspection date?
I like that. Very good.
Very efficient.
Okay. So can I get a motion for the special permit?
Uh, hold on a minute. Okay, so we'll take these one at a time. I make a motion to approve the special permit for section six, table one, at nine Walco- Walcott Road, Residence B2 District, to operate a residential kitchen in a single-family home, one year from final inspection date of construction.
Madam Chair, may I just-
Yes.
Might recommend, uh, the certificate of occupancy.
Okay, I was wondering if that was- Okay.
But.
One year.
One year from-
My understanding is those wouldn't be too different.
One year of, one year from issuance of occupancy permit.
Can I get a second, please?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved.
I make a motion to approve the special permit, section 4B, at nine Walcott Road, Residence B2 District, to construct an addition on a pre-existing non-conforming dwelling.
Can I get a second, please?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved.
I make a motion to approve a variance to section seven, table two, at nine Walcott Road, Residence B2 District, to construct an addition with a non-conforming side yard setback.
Can I get a second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Appreciate.
There you go. Thank you for your patience in allowing us to take that out of order.
All right.
Okay. Next on the agenda, this is two. Hear the appeal of Mike McGovern, PO Box 478, Sutton, Mass., for two special permits to the Town of Shrewsbury zoning bylaws under section 4B and section six, table one, to construct an in-law addition on a pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling upon property located at 398 Lake Street in the Residential B1 District. The subject premise is described on the Shrewsbury Assessors Tax Plate 46, Plot 098000. Welcome. State your name for the record, please.
My name is Michael McGovern from McGovern Development Corp., and I'm also here with Randolph Nikla. He's the owner of the property at 398 Lake Street.
Thank you.
Um, we come in front of you guys tonight to ask for a special permit for an in-law apartment. We are on a, um, non-conform, uh, to construct an in-law addition on a pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling on the subject property in the Residence B1 zoning district. The plan entitled Plan Showing Proposed Addition. We have, for the review, we have the certified plot plan. Um, maybe we could pull that up for us, and I'll walk you through, um, the project and what's going to take place. There's a couple of things in addition to the in-law apartment. There's an existing garage that's probably, probably within a foot or less of the existing property line on Lake Street. We are going to ask for a demolition permit through the building department to remove that garage. It'll be replaced with the twenty-eight by twenty-eight in-law, which also has a garage underneath. On the certified plot plan, you can see there's a rock outlet. That's a wall of ledge that doesn't really allow us. We're already going to have to deal with some of it just to get this addition to work. So to try to push it back anymore would be, um, it would be pretty tough, due to the topography of the lot. I think that we're not asking for any waivers. It meets all the special permit requirements for a in-law apartment. The property is in character of the neighborhood. The addition to the, the, uh, building looks more like a, a family room with a garage under than it would, you know, like any kind of accessory apartment. So I think it would stay in character to, you know, the idea of an in-law. Do you have any other questions for us?
Is the applicant aware of the, um, in-law criteria around in-laws?
Yep. If you want, I can read them out loud, just so that he is. So, um, I believe you did it as comments. So, "In an in-law apartment shall not be occupied by more than three persons related by blood or marriage to the principal residence." You guys, I believe, understood that. And then, "The right authorized by the issuance of the special permit shall be limited to the Nikla and shall remain in effect only during their ownership and occupancy of the premises." You know, I believe you understood those.
Yeah. What, what does that mean that, um, so if we sell the home, the, the, what does that mean entail?
I would ask for clarification from the-
Um, Ms. McAllister, please.
Sure.
Our official interpreter here.
Well, yeah, so, it, you just, please be aware that you still have a single-family house. You are not creating a two-family house with this. So when you do go to sell the house, it'll be advertised as a single-family house with an in-law apartment.
Okay, all right, thank you. Thank you for that.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Uh, well, let's see. Mr. Mulcahy, I'm sure there will be some.
Yeah, so, um, I think the only question I had when looking at the plans was, why have it be only thirteen, uh, feet from the road instead of having it be even with the front of the house? But it sounds like the answer to that is there's a bunch of ledge in the back, and-
Yeah, the, the, it's very substantial. It, it, it comes out, it's, it's, it's very tall, and it's just very thick. It, it goes to, um, my neighbor's property behind us. That, that property actually was part of their parcel, was part of the original homeowner. They sold that part of the parcel to build a house back there.
Okay.
So that ledge was kind of just like a separation between the two homes.
Yeah, and it looks like you can actually see it from the street, looking at, uh, the street view.
Yeah, you can.
So it's pretty significant. So, and you know, you're not here for, um, a variance anyway, it's just a special permit. So I would say, um, that's fine, especially considering that the garage is going to be removed.
Yeah, but it's an ice floor, and it's way too close to the street.
Very, very close.
Anyway, and-
So, on that basis, no issues from me. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Casette?
I have no issues at all. I think this is an improvement, and I'll leave it at that.
Mr. Fulham?
I agree, it looks good.
Ms. Ruffalo?
I agree.
Okay, so do I. Okay, um, this is a public hearing. Is there anybody that wishes to be heard on this matter? Okay, can I get a motion to close the public hearing, please?
Motion to close.
Can I get a second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved.
Motion to approve the special permit- Motion to approve the special permit, section four B, to constr-, uh, at three ninety-eight Lake Street, Residence B one District, to construct an addition on a pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved.
And we have one more. Uh, I motion to approve the special permit for section, uh, six, table one, at three ninety-eight Lake Street, Residence B one District, to construct an in-law apartment.
Can I get a second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, congratulations.
Thank you.
For your construction.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, next on the agenda. This is to hear the appeal of Jessica Zorich, twenty-seven General Ave., Shrewsbury, Mass., for a special permit to the town of Shrewsbury zoning bylaws under section four B, to construct an addition on a pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling and lot upon property located at twenty-seven General Ave., Shrewsbury, Mass., in the Residence B one District. The subject premise is described on the Shrewsbury Assessor's Tax Plate twenty-three, plot two three nine zero zero zero. Applicant, please state your name.
Jessica Zorich.
Thank you. And let us know what you're asking of us.
Um, I'm her fiancee, I'm Nick Perna. Um, so, uh, I've been doing most, most of the consultation with the contract and stuff, so if it's okay with the board if I can speak on-
Yes, certainly, by all means.
Alright, thanks. Um, so we are getting married. Uh, she has one child, I have two children, so we're looking to, um, increase the space of, of her home, put an addition on it, uh, just for, for the growing family. Um, so her home is on a, uh, existing non-conforming lot. We were originally looking at, uh, building up, putting a second floor on, um, and we consulted with three different contractors. Um, and we were quoted, uh, in the range of three, three hundred thousand dollars plus, uh, to go up. And all we're looking to do is basically put on an additional bedroom and bathroom. Um, so we felt as though that was unreasonable financial hardship for us, uh, just for that, uh, simple space that we needed. A current contractor, um, came up with the current plan to put an addition on, um, the side of the home, um, which is a fairly small addition, sixteen by thirty-six, um, saw a request in the special permit as that would increase the, uh, footprint of the home on the, uh, existing non-conforming lot. The proposed addition, we don't think would cause any nuisance or substantial detriment, uh, you know, to the neighborhood or the property. We think it would improve the value of the property. Um, it wouldn't change the style of the home, it just, um, it's, it's a ranch-style home. It would, it would, uh, still be a ranch. It would basically just, um, we're requesting to put on, it's a master bedroom, master bath, and one additional bedroom.
Thank you. Ms. McAllister?
Uh, I would just draw the board's attention to the plot plan labeled revised plot plan in your folder.
Thank you.
Um, we had them, uh, add the setback measurement from the existing porch to show that it is already non-conforming in the rear, so the thirty-three and two-foot rear yard setback is, uh, protected as a pre-existing non-conforming setback.
Thank you. Comments from the board? Mr. Mulcahy?
Um, you know, I don't think I have any real particular issue with it. Um, you know, it's a common issue, I think, in town. The older lots being pretty narrow, a hundred-foot wide lot is pretty typical, and going up is very expensive. And also, as you mentioned, it's a ranch-style home. I believe most of the other houses in the neighborhood are also ranch-style homes, so you're actually keeping more and keep, you're more in keeping with the look of the neighborhood by, um, increasing on the first floor as opposed to adding a second floor. And from the renderings that you've provided to us, I think it looks really nice. So, um, I'd be interested to hear if the, a butter has any issue with it, um, or any of the other neighbors, but to me, I, I think it looks very sensible.
Ms. Cosette?
Uh, I have no issue in terms of the non-con, non-conformity. Um, the existing non-conformity is at twenty-nine feet and your addition is going to be, you know, more than that from the back, um, setback. So I have no issue and, um, good luck.
Thank you.
Mr. Fulon?
Looks good to me.
Ms. Ruffalo?
I have no issues.
The only question I have, and I know the answer, but I'd like you to explain it, the cage in the back. Can you just, I, I see it identified as a cage. Just tell us a little bit about that.
Sure, so I, uh, rehab raptors, hawks, owls, eagles, and falcons. Um, I have a state, federal, and educational purpose, permit to do so. So we take in raptors from the public, environmental police, um, animal control, state police, and, um, we help nurse them back to health. So they're housed in that cage.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Okay, this is a public hearing. Is there anybody that wishes to be heard on this matter? Being that there is not, can I get a motion to close a public hearing?
Motion to close.
Can I get a second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved.
I make a motion to approve the special permit and, sorry, to approve the special permit in section four B at twenty-seven General Ave., Residence B one District, to construct an addition on a pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling.
Can I get a second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved. Thank you. Congratulations, have fun.
Thank you.
I want to see the birds.
Well, go.
Add a condition, Patrick.
You should have put a condition on that, too late.
Provided that Mr. Fulon is allowed to see the birds.
Raptors. Correct. Okay. Next hearing is to hear the appeal of Lakeway Realty LLC, forty-eight Harrington Ave., Shrewsbury, Mass., for a special permit to the town of Shrewsbury zoning bylaws under section four B to renovate one unit in a pre-existing non-conforming two-family dwelling and lot upon property located at forty-seven and forty-seven A, North Quinsigamun Ave., in the MF one District. The subject premise is described on the Shrewsbury Assessor's Tax Plate thirty-one, plot zero five zero 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 zero.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, if it please the board, my name is Richard Ricker and I'm an attorney with offices at eleven Maple Ave. in Shrewsbury, and I'm here with Tom Paquette, who's manager of, of this LLC. This is a request actually to reduce the footprint of this property, um, and to remove a garage portion, which basically goes right out to the street. Um, it's a, in my opinion, and I suggest to you, I hope you find that, uh, this is a really good improvement from not only this property, but also for the neighbors, because it increases the sightline for the, as you pull out of the driveways for both properties. Um, it is a, uh, special permit under, uh, section four B, and I would suggest to you respectfully that, uh, clearly there's no nuisance value to this request. Uh, this is a vast improvement to this property. Tom and his wife Barbara, who's in the, in the rear, um, who's, um, the real manager of this. Sorry, Tom. Um, uh, they live there, um, and they're improving the property as they live there. So, um, I would ask you to respectfully approve this request.
Thank you. Ms. McAllister?
I don't have anything else to add. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. Um, Mr. Mulcahy, any further comments?
Uh, no. All set. Thank you.
Ms. Cosette?
All set too.
Mr. Fulon?
All set.
Ms. Ruffalo?
I'm all set.
Yes, and I am as well. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody that wishes to be heard on this matter? Being that there is no one that wishes to be heard, can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
I have one question, sorry.
Yes.
Ms. McAllister. So we're not, uh, approving a modification to a special permit. We're just approving the special permit all over again with this modification.
Yeah, I, yeah. There's a history to this property. Completely separate, um, from this appeal now.
Okay, so we're just, uh, taking it as a new thing. Alright, great. I make, make a motion to close the public hearing.
Can I get a second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved.
I make a motion to approve the special permit of section four B at forty-seven forty-seven A, North Quinsigamun Ave., in the multi, MF one, I'll say, District, to renovate one unit in a pre-existing non-conforming two-family dwelling.
Can I get a second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Paquette?
Thank you very much.
Attorney Ricker?
Thank you.
Thank you. Last on our agenda. This is to hear the appeal of Select Trucks of America LLC, two four seven seven Deerfield Drive, Fort Mills, South Carolina, for a special permit modification from the town of Shrewsbury zoning bylaws under section six, table one, to amend the site plan showing the proposed use to allow the sale of large trucks and equipment for property located at three Commerce Road, Shrewsbury, Mass., in a limited industrial district. The subject premises are described on the Shrewsbury Assessor's Tax Plate forty-five, plot zero zero seven zero zero.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, members of the board, respectfully, my name is Richard Ricker and I'm an attorney with the law offices at eleven Maple Ave., and I'm here on behalf of Select Trucks of America and, uh, BTR Realty, which is the landowner. You may recall, we, we were here before you, uh, this past summer, um, for the permit for Select Trucks. Also with me tonight is Steve George Alice, who's representing the, uh, landowner as well as the, uh, Select Trucks franchise. It's, Select Trucks of America, uh, is a franchise of, of a larger dealership, um, countrywide. As you may recall, uh, the plan that we showed you when I was last before you was this plan. And, um, we had a line drawn across here which showed the limit of the workforce Select Trucks. What we didn't show you was anything going on in the rest of the lot. And I apologize for that. I'll, I'll take the mayor's cover for that. Um, we went up there. I looked at the lot before that last hearing and there was nothing there. Um, the, um, fact is that what we, um, when we started dealing with this site, UPS, which has a seasonal operation up there for their Christmas package deliveries, basically, puts their, um, mobile cross-dock facility there, and, uh, they have a number of vehicles, all small vehicles that go in and out of there. Um, they switch packages between trucks and things in the, in this cross-dock, uh, trailer, basically, um, on the middle portion of the lot. That's only going on for, um, like, two or three months a year if they, if they come back. Um, Mr. George Alice would tell you if you asked him, and I'll, I'll tell you on his behalf, that, um, he didn't know and, and doesn't know, uh, on a year-to-year basis whether they're coming back. Um, as you may recall, UPS was moving to Grafton. A couple of years ago, they would, they bought some property down there and who knows what's gonna happen in the future. And in any event, he did not know at that time that we were before you, that they were in fact gonna, gonna come back. And the license that they have for the few months that they are there, uh, is a seasonal license for just the few months that they actually operate, which is, they just set, they set up in, uh, basically beginning of November, uh, and they, they run through December, through the Christmas holiday, and then, uh, I understand they do whatever's necessary for returns through the month of January, and then they're gone again. And they remove their equipment. So there was nothing there when we were before you last time. And frankly, I, although I had some, um, discussions with the building department about this, I, I questioned whether or not, um, a, such a seasonal and temporary, uh, use even belonged on a site plan when we know that eventually there's gonna be another building on that parcel. And, and you may recall that I, I said that when I was before you last, that, um, you know, there's a number of different businesses that, that operate out of this overall property. And this particular lot was separated out recently with an A and R. Um, and, and that, um, that A and R, that had actually basically established this lot as a separate parcel. So, um, UPS has this trailer here, uh, in the middle, and we, the, the other thing that I think, John, John Grinny is here, and I, I asked him to come tonight, uh, and in fact, I warned him that if he didn't come, I'd throw him under the bus. So, um, he might, he can speak to what the requirements are of, uh, this trailer and, and the modular that sits on the lot. Um, we're having ongoing discussions with, uh, the building department about this. Um, there is considerable discussions back and forth about, um, the use of this property as UPS is using it. But they've been doing it for a few years. There was a permit applied for, uh, two or three years ago. Um, and frankly, it just got by. And I think it got by the building department too, because, I mean, they knew there was a permit on it and, and, um, you know, it, I assure you, uh, this was not intended to do anything but get Select Trucks their, their building permit. As you may recall, I, uh, I suggested to you that they were looking for a building permit right away to get going. As it stands right now, we have a half a million dollars' worth of steel sitting on the ground there and, and no foundation permit yet because of this. So, um, this, I would suggest to you that the same applies to this as, as applied before. This, this, and the other use of this property, we went, uh, after having a meeting with the building department and several other departments, this far rear portion of the property here, um, was, was and has been used as an overflow lot for the Freightliner dealership, which is Tri, Tri- 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 Trucks LLC and, or Inc. And, uh, we, we've been before the Selectmen, um, as a result of our discussions, and, and we obtained an extension to the license for that use of that, that parcel. Now that the parcel is separated from the main parcel, we had to get an extension of the license to allow them to continue parking up to forty vehicles at that location, which is, if you're standing on the lot, you, it, it's, it's hard to even tell that that's part of the lot, because it's, it's way back and, and down. So, so there's really, at least at some stages, three uses going on in this, on this eleven A compartment at any, any given time. Um, one of which is clearly a seasonal and temporary use. And, uh, that's why we're here, in order to ask you to approve, uh, the amendment of the special permit that you granted us back in, I believe, August, um, and to approve the site plan that we've given you as part of that permit. So we're looking for that modification. And I hope I put it all together succinctly for you.
Thank you. Attorney Ricker. Ms. McAllister?
No, uh, Attorney Ricker did a great job. There's lots of layers to this one. Um, I would just add that it is, this three Commerce is going in front of the planning board on Thursday night for a site plan approval, um, and they'll review the site plan, uh, obviously. So the question in front of the board tonight is simply regarding the special permit for the sale of large trucks and equipment.
Got it.
And I would suggest to you respectfully that I, I don't think anything changes. There's no nuisance to this. I mean, this is a very heavily trafficked truck area. Um, it's, it's in keeping with the neighborhood. Uh, everything around it has to do with trucks and truck tires and trucking companies. So, um, I would suggest to you that it's an appropriate use for the, for the property and that it would cause no nuisance whatsoever. As you can see, uh, Select Trucks will be exiting and entering on Commerce Road, which is a private road that comes off of Route twenty.
Yeah, that's the only, uh, in and out?
For, for Select Trucks, yes. The rear of the lot, uh, that utilizes that back driveway to, to run vehicles back and forth between the Freightliner, uh, franchise and, which is the, which is the lot next door in that particular spot.
But that, that doesn't come off a hot turnpike?
No.
Mr. Mulcahy, questions, comments?
Um, so I, I don't have any issues with this in principle. I think the only thing that gives me any pause is, I was just noticing on the, um, some of the satellite photos that, that lower rear parking area that you're seeing was used for Freightliner. It looks like there's quite a bit of stuff that's parked or stored off of the paved area, um, which would be inside, well inside the wetlands buffer zone there. Um, and that's not great, but I also realize that's outside the purview of the, the zoning board and it's something more for planning or for conservation to deal with. Um, but I just wanted to flag that because it's, um, not ideal. Um, but other than that, I, I think this is a, a fine use for the area and I don't have any issues with it.
I would note that the conservation has looked at this.
They have.
And we, and it's grindings that are down there, not, not solid pavement, but, but pavement grindings.
Okay.
So it's a, it's a hard pack.
Okay.
Ms. Cosette?
So to make sure I'm not confused, um, I know we approved this use, the special permit for this use, in September or-
I think August, yeah.
August or September?
Maybe August. I think I applied in August, maybe it was September, yes.
And just to be clear, the plans that we were shown showed above that line, but it didn't show these other uses that you're describing, which is-
That's correct.
Temporary seasonal, uh, use by UPS. And then below that, an access drive for overflow vehicles for some other location.
For the Freightliner franchise, next door.
Okay.
Right. Which is owned by, which is owned by the same landowners, basically.
Yep, so, um, I, I think what we're being asked is to approve a special permit for these multiple uses.
No. No.
Correct me if I'm wrong.
No.
Just, um, just, Madam Chair, oh.
Yes.
So that's the part I'm confused with. We already approved this use, so why exactly are we here today?
I'll tell you, because the building inspector was, felt that I had misrepresented to you what was going on in this lot, and.
Because, okay, so, so.
And frankly, and frankly, I resent that remark, frankly, but that's what happened. Now, the fact is that those other uses are permitted, so it's not a zoning issue whatsoever.
Okay.
Okay?
I get it. Thank you for that.
Yes, Ms. McAllister?
So when we made that decision in August, perhaps knowing about these additional uses could or could not have affected our decision, but likely not. But we're here today to just make sure we want to stick to that decision or change it.
It's because when, you know, when, when an applicant applies for a permit, a special permit through the zoning board, it must be accurately depicted of all the uses on the lot. The site plan must be accurate, so that's just why they're coming back to revise it.
And again, and again, those uses were not on the lot when I was in front of you.
Yeah.
Okay? So that's important.
And there was a permit for those uses, anyway.
Yes.
A building permit for one of the structures for the other use.
And further, we're just approving a modification to your special permit application to, because you've changed the site plan to include those other things.
That is correct.
That's really, okay.
Yeah.
Thanks, I'm clear.
That is correct.
And I'm fine with it, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Fulon?
Lisa's fine, I'm fine.
Don't put, he doesn't mean that.
Is that fair? Ms. Ruffalo?
I have no issues.
Okay, great.
All right.
Um, no, I don't have any issues either. Just to be clear, this wasn't, this is a temporary use, and it was not.
UPS use, yeah.
Correct. UPS use is temporary. And I did look at the site the last time you were in front of us, and it was not there. So.
I did, too. I mean, I always go and look at lots before I talk about them. I've always said to everybody, that's the last thing you want to do, is talk about a lot without seeing it before you go and talk about it, so.
Right.
It just happens that, you know, the timing was what it was, so.
Well, and the planning board has mechanisms in place to continue to ask.
I still have a question as to whether it belongs on a permanent site plan like this. I just don't know. But erring on the side of caution and trying to get a building permit for Select Trucks, it is what you see. And I don't, again, I don't think, Lisa, it would change your mind at all, because I don't think it makes any difference in the overall use of the lot, because I don't think there's any nuisance that, that would emanate from even the fact that they're using the whole lot.
Mm-hmm.
You know, so it's, it's a proper use, it's, UPS use is a distribution use, which is permitted in this district.
Well, and I'm all for more information, so.
Yep.
I, I like that it's here, but again, I don't know if it affects, I don't believe it would have affected the decision at the time, but I appreciate that it's here, and I would.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody that wishes to be heard on this matter?
I threw John under the bus, so I guess it's.
Your opportunity.
Clear your good name.
Being that there is no further comment, I would request a.
Motion to close.
To close the meeting, please.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Hearing.
The hearing.
I'm sorry, close the public hearing.
I make a motion to close.
Thank you.
Seconded.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Can I get a motion, please?
I make a motion to approve the modification of a special permit, Section 6, Table 1, at 3 Commerce Road, in the limited industrial district, to amend the site plan showing the proposed use to allow the sale of large trucks and equipment.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.